Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We'll call our Scottsburg City Council meeting to order. And on this evening at six thirty tonight, this is January the tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the year of our Lord, at Scottsburg City Council. The first thing we do is we'll stand and have a word of prayer, then we'll say the pledge of allegiance. As we stand, I want to thank you everybody for coming out and joining this evening. So let me begin with a prayer. Father, we just thank you for the day you've blessed us with. Thank you for life itself that you've given to us. Father, this pilgrimage of life is amazing. And we've just come through a holiday season, and Father, we're in the early stages of a new year. You've opened the doors of cold and snow, and Father, we can feel. And we just cannot help but to notice and to enjoy and to praise and thank you for the beauty that you give in snow and in life itself, Father. There are many hurts, there are many times we have to eat a bitter root. But Father, you're good, your word says you'll never leave us nor forsake us. Father, it's by your hand you clothe us, by your hand you feed us. And Father, when there's no food, you give us manna. So we bow before you, thank you. We thank you, Father, for each member here tonight. Thank you for our citizens. Father, I pray for these councilmen, that you bless them with wisdom and discernment. And I pray you be with us this evening. Thank you, and Jesus, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda this evening is a roll call, our clerk treasurer, Jan Roy.
Mayor Amy.
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Here.
Bill Hockland.
Here.
Rick Mans.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rowe.
Here.
Thank you. The next thing is the approval of the minutes in December twenty-eighth meeting. If you've had a chance to look over your minutes, we'll accept a motion to approve the minutes presented.
Some of them there.
Christian Evans makes the motion. Is her a second please?
I'll second.
Chris Albertson seconds. Any questions, comments? Here now, will everyone say aye?
Aye, aye.
I'll abstain because I was not present at that meeting.
Very good, thank you.
It's your, your crazy.
No, I just go for the flu.
Well, you know, the COVID kind of shut us down on the flu.
So we were unanimous for with one abstention, the best strategy. And the next thing is the, our agenda is time for public comment. At this time, the city of Scottsburg City Council accepts public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council, we ask to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Your marks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. So we have somebody tonight, looks like we have a lecture tonight, to come forward and speak.
Somebody might break down, so we have to step up.
You go, just give us your name, please.
Sure, I'm Ross Spencer. And here to discuss the property of ten eighty-five Emerald Drive in the Auburn Heights subdivision in Scottsburg. Company by the name of Oxford Company has opened up a drug and alcohol abuse recovery center. And in this case here, make sure I cover this, so I do not live in that subdivision any longer. I am one of the two original developers of the subdivision, but my father does. My father's in Florida, and he simply said, "Son, if you don't get over here, I'll disown you." So I'm here. So, but some of the questions, okay, that really questions and definitely will not need five minutes, is really question how this happened and how it happened so quickly and how it happened without some of the members of the subdivision knowing anything about it. So the property itself is a zoned R1 residential, single family. There's a set of covenants still active with the subdivision that indicates R1, single family. And it just feels like a step of the due process might have been skipped here. And that's, it's a question, it's nothing I'd believe at all. So I think the other thing that's, at least, I can't speak for everybody here. Speaking for my father, have no problem with the fact that we need help for folks that have these types of issues in our community. So where those places are located, I think needs to be controlled. And needs to be some new process, or folks need to have the right to at least understand what's going on. So I'll be very thankful.
Okay, thank you. Any councilman want to respond?
I think I have a pair of comments, and then if we have, if we have responses, then after the fact.
Okay, be great.
My name's Brad David, and I live next door to the house of question on the ten eighty-one Emerald Drive. I knew nothing about this until somebody sent me a Facebook post of this place advertising for people to come rent, which, again, we're a single family residential entity. Anyway, the way I understand it, they're going to rent to eight single men. And they're in recovery for a drug or alcohol, whatever that could be. Everybody agrees, I think, I agree that it's needed in this county for sure, but the fact is, is a, well, in fact, if you don't mind, I'll read real quick. Declaration of Covenants for Auburn Heights subdivision, Article Two, Section One, Primary Use Restrictions, No Lot Shall Be Used Except For Private Single Family Residential Purposes. That's the bottom line of my argument. If you call an article, then I might know how this can happen. I purchased my lot, I built my house twenty-two years ago, I raised three children there. It's a nice thick hood, and I hope to keep it that way, so. That's basically all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Somebody, it's Josh Waterston, and I live in the subdivision as well. I, the questions I have are, when Mr. Boulington put a pole barn up, we were all notified that he was building a building. But then they put this recovery home in, and nobody was notified of anything. I'm originally from Madison, my wife's originally from Ohio, so we're not locals of Scottsburg. When we moved to Scottsburg, the thing that brought us to the neighborhood was the quietness, the, no offense to my neighbors, but the average age of the neighborhood. I have a, I have a five-year-old autistic daughter, and knowing, living on this little road where you didn't need to be on the road unless you really lived on the road, was a thing that brought us to that neighborhood. We also enjoyed the neighbors there. I was working at the sheriff's office at the time, there was never any problems out of the neighborhood, it was a quiet neighborhood. And I'm not saying that it's going to change, but you're bringing eight people in from who knows where with what said problems, and you're putting them into this neighborhood. So now a neighborhood of thirteen, fourteen houses maybe?
Nineteen.
Nineteen houses, now there's eight people possibly driving from this one house alone. So you've, you've almost doubled the traffic. So I know that's a concern for us, especially with the kids. My neighbors across the street, they have little kids, which is why they're not here. That, that's their concern as well. And so, like everybody else, we're just wondering how it was put in place with no warning, with no input, no thought. And then I do know that these are needed, and several cities around have these, and that's great, but they're also in a controlled area, not a residential area. They're also mandated or managed by either the local area, the city, or somebody there on the grounds to, to watch the, the ins and outs of this. And I don't believe that's how that's just going to work here, so, thank you.
Josh, thank you. Charlie, one question. Did, did you contact the residents? Were you putting up a pole barn or were you putting up?
I'd say it's more of a garage than a mile.
And did you contact them because?
I'd send everybody to the subdivision with a letter saying I was building to see if there was any problems.
You'd need a variance, I think.
Yeah, I'd get a variance.
So it wasn't due to a deed restriction that you were putting a pole barn up opposed to a garage, was it anything like that?
Excuse me?
In other words, I'm assuming you have deed restrictions on your, on your property?
Yes, I'd get a variance on one side of the property.
Gotcha.
Which are very interesting, actually, how folks, you were doing property on, had nothing to do with this type of building you built.
Right, right. But I'd send a letter to everybody in the subdivision, not just my neighbor, the one living behind me, but everybody.
And, okay, so, and this deed restriction requires you to do that, or just to just get a variance?
A variance. Day of our day.
The zoning law.
Zoning laws.
But, I mean, Charlie lives farther away from me than this house that they've established. But there was no, no notification whatsoever of this business. He was just putting the place to store his Corvettes.
Plural.
I wrote the jealousy part out of this.
Who's next tonight?
I'll go.
Thank you.
And my name is Angie Ritchie, I also live in the subdivision. My biggest concern is, I was assaulted when I was in high school. So when we decided to live in the subdivision, we did a lot of research on it. And my husband's gone ninety-five percent of the time out of state for working. So it's just me and my eighteen-year-old and twenty-year-old, and she's off to college. So I find it a little disturbing that there was nothing sent out. I mean, we had no, I mean, we weren't notified of anything. So that's a huge concern of mine.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I know, Charlie, really, I'm the one that built the pole barn. The biggest concern, I mean, I remember everything my neighbors had said, we didn't get any notice at all on it. And like he was saying, you've increased traffic, like eight families moved in there. And we got a little youth subdivision there, we're not used to a lot of traffic. I can't imagine this is not going to increase traffic. And any of the research I did on this company here, they, they're not going to supervise these people at all. So they have no supervision, they, they say all they supervise themselves. Well, in the real world, you know, that works sometimes, sometimes it don't, and I'm just worried about the times that it don't. I mean, anything can happen, any subdivision at any time, but, you know, we don't know these people, they don't have any roots around, and I'm far believing we need places like this, but the way it was done and not told anybody, it just didn't seem right, you know, the way, way it was done. We didn't have any, we didn't have no say in it at all, so.
I'm Joe Siler, ten eighty-eight Emerald Drive, I live in the subdivision as well. I think one of the, one of the things is we're going to have codes, we're going to have laws. He read out, a single family residence, that's the code for this area. This would be a fraction, break in that rule. We have rules and laws in place for a reason, so we're coming to you to help us enforce the rule. As a Christian man and a Christian family, I'm all about these people needing help, and I'm glad they can get it. I understand there's another one in town. The difference is, is that one doesn't have the rules or codes like we do in our area. And that's the difference. So we're asking you to help us out.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I, I think this is the first time they've been in a, most of them have been in the subdivision as of ago. Well, I couldn't find any when I did my research. This is the first one.
Who's next?
I'm Katie Boswell, I don't live in that subdivision, I live directly behind the subdivision in Spittlewick, I can see the backyard in the house from.
What's your, what's your name, hon?
Katie Boswell.
Okay, thanks, Katie.
Um, I can see their house, I have two young kids under the age of nine. They have family members that live further on down the road, we do, they're almost to the age where I'd be okay with them to walk to family members' homes. I do not feel comfortable with that now because my biggest problem is, is, one, it says they can be one day sober, one day sober. I work in healthcare, I know what drugs and alcohol do to patients. One day sober means absolutely nothing to these people. One day sober does not give them the opportunity to do the proper detox to be able to stay sober. So if they're not being regulated by anybody and they're being regulated by themselves, how are they supposed to be responsible? And how is that not going to bring more traffic into those homes with ambulances and police officers because they're detoxing? Because anybody can be one day sober, and then two days down the road, they're going to start detoxing because those drugs are no longer in their system. So one day sober is their only requirement is crazy. And this is a family residential home, young kids, elder adults, this is not something that needs to be happening in these quiet neighborhoods. We've lived there for five years, and it's been so peaceful, it's super nice. Our kids can ride their bikes on the streets, I don't have to worry about it. We have neighbors that don't care if we walk through their yards to get to the other subdivision so they can play with their friends in that subdivision. It is a very quaint neighborhood, and I don't want to see that go away because the, the reason we moved into that neighborhood is it was close to town, it wasn't crazy outside of town, and it keeps us in, like, we can, we can let our kids ride our bikes, they can do what they want, they have friends down the road, I feel comfortable with them walking down to their houses, and I don't have to worry about it because they're not on a crazy busy side street or anything, they're in a quiet neighborhood. And I don't want to bring, and I think this is a great opportunity for these Oxford homes to do it, it's just not the right place to do it. They need to be in a center of town because I've also heard that they're needing to do jobs and stuff. A lot of these people probably don't have their licenses anymore. So why aren't we putting outside of town where they're going to have to walk further into town to get to churches and businesses to work? Put them in the center of town where they have a way to get to everything that they need to be. I mean, I'm sorry, if I came off rude.
Oh, you're good, you're good. Hey, you're right in time too, good job, Keith.
See, I have a little time. Jim Boswell, I, I moved in the neighborhood across the street, and I narrow booked, okay? So these folks should have to know too. The only question I have, and I'm not right into all this, but what are the legalities of the zoning? Is that, is, is that facility a business? Is that facility multifamily? Are they legal to be in that R1 neighborhood, just like any other neighborhood that's residential, single family? So, like I said, I'm not right into all of it, but I'd like for you guys to seriously consider and look at that.
Thank you. Next.
I'll go.
There you go.
My name is Wanda Hillcom. My family and I moved into Scottsburg forty-two years ago. We've been in business in this county, this town, very much. My husband passed away three years ago, but in, before that, before he passed away, we lived on Green Street for twenty-six years, and he wanted to leave me in a safe place. And he thought he was doing that in that home. And that neighborhood has been wonderful, I have felt safe, I have not been scared, and that is a lot of other people, but it will, I'm afraid it will change. My house backs up to their property. I am on Spittlewick, I mean, on the home lane, the third house in. So I would appreciate somebody taking an interest in doing what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
All right, I'm not very good at speeches here, but.
What's your name, brother?
Uh, Sue Roy. Sue Roy.
Okay, Sue, okay, sure.
And I've lived over there for twenty-one years. I've felt very safe, but I don't want people to look for me, friends who live there, and I, I don't really have people. Elderly women have left there, but no man, but hasn't, you know, that live by themselves. And I just don't feel like it's safe, they're right across the road, and they can see me coming in and out, and if they just see nothing but a woman coming in and out with a car, no man around, that gives them ideas, so I just, I'm just, I'm not. It's like that, will that not make your property go down if you wanted to sell it? Nobody, no one's ever been there. I just don't, I just don't understand.
Thank you, Sue. Who else to see? Anybody else?
I have something to say, but it's completely off topic, so.
Is it, is it on this topic?
No, completely different topic.
Okay, let, let's finish with this topic, and then we'll go to you, John. Let's have council now respond, then we'll have the attorney respond.
Well, I, I, I think I'd like to start. My name is Chuck Rowe, for those of you who haven't met me, but I'm the council representative in that area. And I want you to know that this is not the first one of these issues we've dealt with up here. And I want you to know as well that I have to be careful what I say up here because, you know, possible litigation, those kinds of things. But you, you, if you hear me correctly, you're upset about the way this came in, no notice, no nothing until, you know, they just started moving in. I, I'm upset about that too, I was upset about that last time. You're upset about the safety of the area, I, I am too, I, I was upset about it last time. I, I, you know, especially with the special needs daughter, I, you know, I, I can only imagine, you know, what, what is going to be reminded, and I hate that. I, I feel like, you know, you come here tonight to ask us for help, to ask us to, to disallow this, and, and I'll let the attorney speak to this in a minute, but, but we don't have that for it. No, no one came to us with the previous Oxford house and asked to let them set up business, okay? It happened just exactly the way that this one came in. No one came to us, you know, the first time I knew about it was last week when, I can't even remember what I was talking, oh, Eric, I'm sorry, you, you called, and that's the first I heard it, what day was that, Tuesday maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's the way they operate, okay? Do I think the zoning is correct? Absolutely not. At, at the very least, it should be considered a home business, which would require the variance and require the owner of the home to live in the home, okay? But my opinion doesn't matter in the grand scheme of things. Now, I, and I know Councilman Evans has been looking into some things that could, could possibly help, I, I want you to know that we, we will do whatever we can to, to help. There just doesn't seem to be a lot of options here, and that, that, that makes me angry and frustrated, I have to say that, okay? I, I feel like, you know, we, we should be able to do something. And, and what there is, I, I'm not going to go into any detail, but it, it bothers me that, that in our residential areas, that, that these kinds of businesses, businesses what they are, I mean, if we're hiring, you know, if I, if I wanted to, if I wanted to open a boarding house, you know, could I do that? It's the same principle, you know, in, in my opinion. But unfortunately, I'm on the city council, not the Supreme Court. But if, if we go through this, I, I want you to know that we're on your side, okay? Sometimes our hands are just tied, we're both a little wild. But it's just, you know, I, I get, I get upset when, when these things come and, and, you know, it's not right, and we don't seem to be able to right wrong, I guess is what I'm saying. But I don't want anyone in here to think that, that Oxford House approached any member of this council or any city official and said, "Hey, can we open this up?" No, that's not, that's not the way to operate, okay? So I'm just as upset about that as you are.
I'd like to, to second Chuck's comments as well, and I'll kind of go back and forth on this a little bit. I'm sure most of you guys have done your research on, on how they go about the basic procedures on the Supreme Court case. I see some heads nodding, but essentially, kind of to Councilman Rose's point, what they're doing is, in turn, in some of our opinion, I'll say at least mine, is kind of circumventing zoning law, right? So this is again, and I know it's, council has heard me say this, this is again why the federal government shouldn't issue anything that the local government should do, you know, the big government shouldn't tell the little government what to do, especially in this situation, because now our hands are tied. So essentially, due to the Americans with Disabilities Act in passing in the nineties, and in the Supreme Court case in ninety-five, drug, past drug users or current drug addicts are listed as disabled. So anything that is under that disabled umbrella, we can no longer discriminate per zoning law. So even if the local government, which in my interpretation, local government, one of our core, you know, necessary requirements are to enact on regulations. So we don't have businesses and subdivisions and subdivisions and schools, et cetera, that's one of our core principles. Now, we can't even do that because the federal government have came down and basically said, "Here's the Americans with Disabilities Act, here's who's listed under that, you can't discriminate against this class, this class, and this class," which is a great act in a lot of respects, but now we're in a situation where Supreme Court, per a city, which was in Edmonds, Washington, they had the same issue, they filed a suit to enact their zoning laws to say, "This is R1, we are going to do this, the single family, these, these folks are not going to come in here and do that." Made all the way up to Supreme Court, Supreme Court decided by a sixty-three vote that that city could not do that. Not only did they determine that city could not do that, they were countersued by this company for a lot of money, a whole lot of money. So, again, I know you guys have probably done your research, and I applaud you guys for coming out for that, and to say, to Councilman Rose's point, trust us, we are on your guys' side. If there's anything that we can do, we will absolutely do. Unfortunately, there is a pretty large precedent, just so happens to be the largest precedent in the United States, the Supreme Court, that has cited innocence with the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act. So it's a pretty steep hill to climb, but we're going to exhaust all that we can to see what we can do and make that work. The first Oxford house that you guys are referring to on White Street, that was in my district, I know, I called Josh for quite a while when that came in, and I know it's not going to make too many people feel better, I mean, leaving here tonight, but to this point, not done with, there hasn't been any issue. I know the mayor, we had an issue at Lake Iowa with some of the fish population, I think they even came down and helped, and that, that helped our arson record employee. So that's not to, to make you guys feel better, that's just to say, "Look, you know, this is not our first rodeo, unfortunately, we're in this position." I found out because, like, Councilman Rose just said, he called me, and I, that's the first time I found out about it. So we're in the same boat as you all, and anything that we can do to help, we will, but it's, it's, it's kind of a tough deal, and fighting Supreme Court is, is no easy task.
Yeah, you know, I, I live at Greenway Drive on Greenway Estates, which is the next subdivision in there, twenty-one years. I just hate it that they can do that with the laws behind them. Some of you know that we have a facility similar to that, but it's not alcohol and drug related, it's mental disability, that they moved in there fifteen years ago. We also tried, when I was a homeowner, as a homeowner, we tried to stop, and we found the same problem. I feel for you, I, I don't know what we can do, if we could do anything, I would definitely do that, but I don't know that what we can do. Like, like Councilman Evans says, we have to be careful what we even say in public for fear of litigation against the taxpayers. So all I can tell you is that we are not for it. I know that when I, my dad passed away, and I sold his house, which is in our neighborhood, one of my biggest fears was selling this and not realizing that I sold it to somebody who's going to open us a rehab facility. Because when you sell, sometimes you don't know who you're selling to. You know, they, they meet your price, and you're kind of tied, your hands are tied. And this is what I want, they're going to give you what you want, you got to sell it. And so that was a fear of mine just recently, because I just, I know how our neighborhood felt when, when we had that facility open, so.
Like the rest of them, I can sympathize exactly what you're talking about. I live in a neighborhood where there's a, a person bought the property, a lot of times on a Friday or Saturday night, the quietest thing in parts of that neighborhood, a few blocks, a few houses, the only quiet thing about was the police cars leaving. After, after a period of time, we didn't have any problems with it, the police were able to take care of it. There was a different type of element that was living there, I'm not getting in trouble on that. We tried to annul it for that. I think we did at one time, but it got struck down because of being the Supreme Court knocked it down. So I, like I said, I can understand exactly what you're talking about.
I'll just say, you know, it's disheartening for us to sit up here and say, we're sorry, but there's nothing we can do, unfortunately. You know, I think that's where we're at tonight. You know, I think Councilman Evans talked about circumventing, you know, they're able to circumvent some of the zoning ordinances and zoning laws. I would just say be vigilant. You guys are all here tonight as neighbors, as friends. One thing they can't circumvent, and, you know, I'm not saying that those type of people are beating that house, they can't circumvent criminal law. So stay vigilant, you know, pay attention to who's going in and out of the house, and do what you're doing now. We have issues. Sure, Chief Zellers is happy to address, address it in that area.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So sir, I have a question on what your comment there about staying vigilant, and especially like Sue's. We have street lights in the neighborhood, and they're pretty on the eyes, for lack of better words. But they're not very bright, they don't cover a whole lot of area. So what's the route that we should take to see if the city could do something about the lighting?
Brighter lighting? I'd certainly drive out there, sure.
Brighter lighting, more lighting? Just, I just know that the lights there, like I said, they're very nice for the neighborhood, but they're not very bright, they don't cover up.
It's by your house, Sue? It's by your house? The lights by your house on? What's your house done?
Can I help, Mary Ann? There's, there's, street lights, that could receive street lights all the way around the subdivision. It's based so many feet apart, I recall what it is, it's been too long. Those street lights were actually picked out the pelvis when the subdivision was developed. So now, my first thought when I hear this is, you know, can we look at brighter holes? That's the first thought, okay?
Okay.
Because the street lights, and they could be colored, they are very nice in appearance.
Is that, is that under an HOA there?
It is not under an HOA.
No, it's city taxes. I can certainly look at that for you, absolutely.
It's a great idea.
Especially, like, in Sue's case, you know?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Is there a light near the property? I don't know if there's a light. Great to tell you.
I live across the street from my house, directly across the street. The closest one is in front of Miss Sue's house, which is forty-five, thirty yards up the road, maybe, or something like that. So it's relatively dark in that specific part of the neighborhood. We're just thinking, if it's lit up better, you got these people out here, maybe they, you know, like she was talking about, one day, I mean, they need their dough, they're going to go knock on somebody's window, they're going to steal something, they're going to go sell it to get their fix. If it's lit up a little better, I might be more difficult for them not to be seen. I'm a reserve deputy sheriff here in the county, I'm going to talk to the sheriff, see if I can get a car. Start leaving in my driveway, which is right across the street from them, just to let them know I have law enforcement that live here, and perhaps that could be a chance as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, presumably we can vote for it, it's in our control, guys. We're here to support whatever it's going to take to make sure things stay safe out there.
So an additional question, if it's okay that I have. I read the Supreme Court decision as well, so I won't pretend I understood every single thing on the meeting, but I understood enough to understand it, but the hands are hardly tied, okay? My question is, there's other covenances and restrictions connected with the subdivision itself, okay? Are those still enforceable, and how do we enforce those?
Well, that's a great, that's a great question. And one of the questions that I have come to Josh, and we had a discussion about it, because there's a bill right now, the General Assembly in Indianapolis, that addresses solar panels and HOA. So who ultimately has? Is it the municipality, or is the HOA that supersedes one another? So I think that's one of the questions that we might have with the state. You know, obviously, the American Disabilities Act is a federal law, and you're talking about Congress at that point. With the state, there might be some granting of the governor, the HOA, what supersedes what. It's a gray area, how do you answer necessarily for that? It's a great question, and one I know that we're going to explore and see what we can do.
But this is not an HOA, this is, this is not a deep restriction. You know, my understanding is that, you know, deed restrictions are enforced by the neighbors. I mean, the city doesn't have, and Josh, you correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the city has any authority to enforce a deed restriction.
Maybe I misunderstood, but was it the subdivision was turned over to the city, and the city accepted the subdivision?
It's the streets and the infrastructure.
Yeah, the streets and the infrastructure.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair. It's been a few years, so, okay.
Do you want to speak?
Let me introduce Josh Dinkin to you. He's the city's attorney, he's a brilliant guy, so he's knowledgeable with this all the time.
We also have a planning and zoning plan for the Mosaic, and we have a center of council, Greg Piper out of Jeffersonville. So Greg and I have consulted on this, and Greg has spoken to most of the council members. I mean, first, I will let you all know, all these council members, very vigilant, have reached out. They're willing to do anything and everything that they can do within their power. For the sake of point in time, we also are responsible for taxpayer dollars. And if we go get a federal lawsuit and put at risk, you know, a few billion dollars, that's not a winnable direction either. As far as the planning and zoning aspect of it, Christian, he's a law school, he hit on it perfectly. That case describes exactly why you didn't receive notice, why the planning and zoning law is not the bullet, silver bullet to this issue. I do a lot of separate real estate and private practice. As far as a deed restriction, if you are protected from that deed restriction, so all any landowners, you should consult a private attorney. I would combine resources, because you're not, your opponent is not, has very deep pockets, and is very intense. So I would combine resources as much as possible and look into that option as quickly as possible.
Well, it does sound like the property owners have a chance to go against the Supreme Court on whether or not it's an R1 or not.
That's the thing, right? So anytime, we've got a couple of police officers, we're looking, Josh, over here. So anytime you've got a government taking action, constitutional rights come into play, okay? So for someone to have a constitutional right and to be affected, has to be government action. So anything we do is state action, okay? When you have the City of Evans, that was state action, trying to enforce and, you know, prevent the occupation of the home. You're individuals, okay? That's a different animal than what we would run into. So I am not telling you that, yeah, you're going to win and everything else. I am telling you, you need to consult with private counsel of your own choosing as quickly as possible to exhaust any possible options that you would have. But I'm pointing out that Evans v. Oxford is a city versus a corporation arguing violation of constitutional rights. You are not a city, it would not be state action. So it is different. So anytime I'm looking at a case, and, you know, the prosecutor or having criminal court says, well, this is exactly the same. I'm looking for areas that, you know, say, well, no, 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 this is different because of this, this, and this. Well, this is different because you're not a city, you're private actors. So you've got to battle, but you've got to battle, I mean, we'll leave it at that.
I have a question. So if this is run as a business, is there not some kind of restriction or law that they can, you can put eight people in a building that has handicap issues, is what they're calling it, no supervision, and nobody watching over them or helping them? You know, this doesn't make sense that you could do that.
You're right, you're absolutely right. I agree.
I mean, is it not some way, you know, I'm sure if they had to have somebody there to raise the price, there might be something different, but.
Who's to be then accountable, was my question?
So they're both great, great questions. So how they're circumventing, if we will, the, and it's listed in here, and I'm sure you guys have probably seen this, but the zoning states, Oxford houses are considered single-family residences for the purposes of zoning. This has been true in practice since March twelve, nineteen eighty-nine, and it affected the ADA amendments since the Fair Housing Act. So they're not purchasing this home as a business, quote unquote. From what I understand, and I could be wrong, so don't call me on this one, I think that there is a, I think it's termed a guardian at each home. So there's one, one person of the eight or seven, whoever's there.
But he's also a handicap person also.
Correct, and I think that they are the caretaker of the group, quote unquote. And I don't know if that's from a liability on the mortgage standpoint, or what they're listing under, I'm not sure. But I know for a fact how they're circumventing, they're not, they're not listing it, and they're like.
What qualification do you have to be, to be that person?
That would be a.
Absolutely, absolutely not, I guess.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
That's the same thing as having, having a quote-unquote pod boss in a jail.
Yeah.
You've got every, all these people in this pod are criminals, and you have a criminal who's the gangster leader, who's still in with the criminals. What's the difference there? Because they get titled under the ADA. So does the, does the building inspector come in and make sure that they have handrails up outside on the sidewalk, and that the fireplace is accessible?
That was my question, I don't understand how.
See, I don't think so. I don't think they can do anything, the health department or building inspector or anybody can do anything with this group that they couldn't do for any other family in the city. I mean, that's my, that's, you've got the same look that I've had for several months. You know, it's like, they can't come into my house and demand to see, you know, the handrails, and the this, and the this, and the this. So since they can't do it to me or to you, they can't do it to this person. It's legally recognized as a single-family unit, and.
Well, what I would say is, just because I'm a, I used to be an addict and an alcoholic, that makes me qualified to watch over seven of my guys? Is that the only qualification I got to have?
They don't get to say.
I think, is it sober for one day?
That's a question I'd like to ask somebody.
Only qualification.
The qualification was sober for one day, a hundred dollar move-in fee, and you had to have a job within two weeks. But if there's nobody there regulating it, who's to say they've got a job in two weeks? And if they're disabled, why would they work? Because they're going to live off the government.
It's like they're using the disabled for, when they want to, when they don't want to, they don't use it. It just doesn't seem like it's right, you know?
We've had big discussions about, you know, addicted people falling under the category of having a disability. I mean, they do, but, you know, it has to be at least somewhat self-applied, you know? But, you know, that's, I mean, I.
I don't have any one of those disabilities, but I don't know if I qualify to watch over any of my guys, you know, with that disability.
I just want to know, like, when something happens, who are we to hold accountable for? Or who do I go to? So if I go outside and I take my kid or my dogs for a walk, and there's needles or this or that, who do I go to to hold them accountable? Because I'll be honest with you, I know that it's not Miss Sue that I'm going to say, hey, she did that. So who do I go to to hold responsible for what's going on in that house? The police? That's who I'm supposed to call? I can't, can I confront them or anybody in that home? Is there anyone in that home that you can say, hey, this is who we call? Because I tried to call the phone number on that brochure, and I didn't get anything answered. And.
Well, somebody did call me, said she was not very friendly, that got, did not get very much information either, so.
And then the lady that, the neighbor called across the street, she got somebody in New York City.
Yeah, they're not local, no.
Josh, I've read this, so I've read the Supreme Court ruling, and obviously not an attorney, so. It says in there that a single-family home doesn't say how many people can stay there. Is that right? Is that kind of how it was worded? So generally, that's a great fight for our attorney complaint procedure, that's one of the things that him and I discussed, is, yeah, I mean, the city could pass an ordinance that says no more than five people in a single-family residence. Well, I know people that's got four kids, and then you have, you have to enforce things as you know uniformly. So then we're telling people with six family members, you can't. I mean, so, yes, there would be in theory, and reading that opinion, they weigh it around it until it's not. Until you have a family of twelve and a family of ten, and you have to enforce it the same way. And I'm not trying to kick people out of homes. No, no, I'm trying to say, is there something that's, so what counts? How many, I don't, I don't. How many values are in this house? Hey, that's one of the things that's.
How many bedrooms are in this? Three.
Three bedrooms, eight people, three bathrooms?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedroom, eight people, where are they staying?
Yeah.
How is this single-family home, where are they staying? Are they staying in the garage?
And the job right in each other.
Yeah, no relation, what's the law?
Indiana Code, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but I'm pretty, I'm the advisory claim director. You can have two people per room in the house, so there are three bedrooms, plus, which is only six, I know, but it includes the living room. So that's how they got them for eight, so that's kind of.
I have a quick question. For the attorney, we've got eight pages of deed restrictions in Albright Heights. And if I understand you correctly, you say they're not worth paper.
That is not what I'm saying.
That's the way I do it, yeah.
No, that is not, I am saying, I do not represent any of you in this room on this matter, or I'm aware of. I have to broadcast that to make sure, I don't represent any of you privately in this matter. I represent the City of Stossberg and the city attorney. I'm telling you that you're discussing, you're advising me, and I have seen them, you have private deed restrictions. The City of Stossberg, I, as city attorney, cannot enforce those private deed restrictions at all. That's between you and your neighbors, a private right of action. That is up to you as neighbors to seek private counsel, is my recommendation, of your choosing, whoever that be, as quickly as possible to address your concerns and pull resources together.
So if your neighbor broke your deed restrictions, and it was not a business, how would you handle it?
Well, an example here, one of them of all things is, you're not allowed to park a tractor trailer on the road.
Right.
All right, so say the neighbor pulls up with a tractor trailer. Who do I call? The police? Do I go to him?
You would, it would be between you and your neighbor. So like if, in the deed restrictions, like if somebody did something in our neighborhood, if we had a deed restriction, I believe what I'm hearing here is that they, they're affecting my property, it's between me and him, and I get an attorney and go through civil court. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Absolutely. Another way of thinking about it is a deed restriction, and I'm all saying it's exactly the same, but it's a great way to think about it, is a contract between you people and your chain title and your neighbors. And if someone, if you had a contract to sell your car, or someone violating a contract, you do what? You sue them. I mean, that's the way you get it corrected. And that is the, that is the course of action to enforce a deed restriction. It's not us, it's not the city. If you involve us, or we try to get involved in that, guess what? We then have state action. That Supreme Court case, we can't do that.
What stands, these deed restrictions have been in place since nineteen ninety-six, and I don't think the neighborhood has a single problem with anybody that's lived in that neighborhood.
Do they even get a business license to live in? They didn't follow anything like that. Must be nice.
Yeah, that's, that's why none of us do anything about it.
Yeah, I suppose.
That's what I'm saying, if they don't, if they don't do what we consider proper channels, then we would all be ordered on Friday.
They're not in violation for not getting one?
Yeah, I know, it sounds crazy, but, I mean, the way, the way things have played out, these are, they're not in violation.
It must be a money-making business, because a household for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And you think, for eight people, they could have bought ten brand-new trailers and put down a hundred of them. They wouldn't have their own trailer keys.
Exactly, it's for profit, it has to be. So, you know, why don't we at least get to regulate it as a home business, when we can't do that?
That's why we're here, to learn.
I know, it's just, it's very frustrating.
So you said for profit, but I believe there are five oh three B.C., if I'm not mistaken.
But they're, they're not letting them live there for a year, I mean.
Somebody's making money.
Well, we're number one, whoever bought the land and rented, rented to the Oxford group, who rented this.
And I know, you feel on something, I mean, if that's the structure, or where, how this has went down, you got to talk to a private attorney. That is your, that is your source of direction here, because that adds another layer that completely differentiates things from the City of Evans case. Because that adds another layer that completely differentiates things from the city of Evans case. Because I, I could be wrong on this, you have to double check. I believe the White Street property that you're referring to, I'm trying to pull it up, who owns the property, the property owner. But I believe it may have been an LLC. So that's something to, to definitely look into.
Well, you guys huddle together and form a union with each other, and go forward and seek counsel. I can tell you what we can do with the city. We will get brighter lights on it for you. I want to ask Chief Zellers to increase your patrols out there. I did what I did in, in, in White Street. I went and actually knocked on the real center. I introduced myself to them. And, and, you know, uh, I can tell you, they were pleasant individuals. I would say, some of them, you know, some of these people are professional people. Some of them are doctors, some of them are attorneys, some of them are teachers. You know, these are people who've gone down the wrong way. I'm not trying to make any excuses, but I'm, we had, we had a turnover of the lake. I'm not an outdoors guy, but you ain't know what they did. We lost three thousand some odd fish. And right to my leg, I went, I said, guys, if you guys could help us with these fishes, we got a bunch of fish out here. And, and they did. You know, they came over, got buckets, and, and we had six guys out there picking up dead fish. So I mean, you know, uh, and I, I will go meet these people. And happy to represent you in any way there, and we'll talk to them. And, you know, uh, but, you know, I think that counsel is wise for you to get together and come up with a plan of action. So, I want you to know what, what I can do for you. Chief will increase your patrols, will put in brighter lights, and I will talk to them. And, uh, you know, so, and happy to do that. And one of them being out of the lake, let me know if he's. Is there anything else before we? John wants to speak. Yeah, a different thing, I, I, I'm saying, anything else on the Oxford House in this subdivision? Thank you.
I, I'll tell you, I appreciate you coming, because, you know, I, I, I hate this situation, but I, I honestly can say I wish it would be the last one. But, but unfortunately it's not, I'm pretty, that's the, that's the real concern I have. You know, what can we do as cities to, to take care of this?
It's worrying, knowing that's putting X, Y, and Z stuff in there.
I, I, I get it, I, I honestly do. You know, it could be, it could be, the house may afford me that, very easily. So I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
The way they go about it doesn't invite, I'm sorry, Dean.
I'm sure.
I said, the way they go about it doesn't invite a good, a good, uh.
Well, a, a, and, and I understand that they, if they declare what they're doing on the front end, they'd have a big fight. You know, this way, you know, then everybody's mad, but it's having fun, you know what I'm saying? You know, a careful man, I think.
Not sure what you're saying, but still.
But you're right, that inspires confidence, doesn't it?
No, if you're doing everything right, you'd think you would come up front and tell nobody about it. So I just, make, make something's fishing.
This is coming out also looking for solutions. Well, I thank all of you for coming out.
Appreciate the input, yes.
Yeah. I can't speak for everybody, but, uh, not surprised by what we learned today personally. But do wanna thank the council and the mayor, thank you for listening to us.
It is a burden to us, I mean, it did, obviously, and, uh, I don't know what to do.
It's hard to believe a business can move into your town without accounting the bill or anything.
Exactly, especially businesses in this nature.
Yeah, definitely.
And I don't want to figure, I don't necessarily say part, part, but I, I understand the need.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, and with that in mind, if there's a need for it, why wouldn't you try to do it right? Like have somebody that's qualified. I mean, I would be qualified, I don't know, probably may, I would be qualified, but I don't think so. How, how can you tell seven hundred guys, like, who watch them if you don't have any? You know, tools would be tools blocks, could be that. You just gonna pick somebody out of the eight to watch everyone?
If, if you guys would have, have you been a little, so I'll, I'll, I'll do my.
Folks, thank you so very much for coming out here tonight. Yeah. Thank you, buddy. Thank you very much.
John, did you see John?
John, are you ready?
Yeah. Want to make a handout for you?
What is your name, John?
My name is John, and, so, I've only got a couple of copies of the thick ones. So we bought this property at nine fifty seven Gardner. If you're unfamiliar with that, that's on, next to the Casey's on thirty-one on the south side, thirty-one dollars a lane. So what we're going to be talking about today is we are asking for tax exemption. Uh, correct, the correct term is the tax abatement, similar to what you guys gave to Bill Sears. Down beyond property, so same basic area, if you don't know that property, if anybody's unfamiliar with the property you're talking about, it's the Marlburner property. Before that, it was West Welding, and then the West family owned it forever. So the property is in deplorable condition.
Steps on the right, right, correct me if I'm wrong. When you're driving south on thirty-one, it steps on the right before you get to Casey's.
Right on the corner, yes. So it's a white building, then there was West Auto in that red building. The house is in poor condition, and there's a trailer, it's a total of two acres right there. All roofs leak horribly, which means there's lots of drywall issues. Someone tried to put a drive-through in through Casey's, get them in by, they tried to drive straight through the building. And I think it worked pretty well for them. Uh, most of the windows in the front are broken some way, shape, or form, and we're going to restore it and bring it back to what we need in our community. So I kinda gave you a couple pieces of paper there. The first is my attempt at the five one, seven, six, seven form of the statement of the year. I had some questions, and what I'm really kinda asking from this council is, what do I need to do? What steps do I need to take to get the tax abatements? Also included a estimate on repairs. As you all know, in this world right now, repairs are basically what they call swag, right? So I'm guessing we'll probably do a month probably two hundred and fifty, and I'm thinking for a total of five years of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars tied up into it. But that is, depending on lumber and everything else, you just have no clue right now. Everything's a wild guess. So I guess where I'm coming from is, I don't necessarily know what the process is, and I'm asking, what is the process? So there, it is called, if you Google it, there's a statement of benefits, it's a, can I get? That's the five one, seven, six, seven. So it's made this, starts the trip. And one of them signed. I, the, I had two questions on it, though, in the mid-level, there was. I didn't know if the city of Stottsburg or DL, DLGF code is seventy-two. I guess it was, I didn't have it on there. Give me a signed one, do we have a signed one? There's a third one in the stack, so it probably carries, is that a signed? Oh, no, this one.
You guys love your ones.
Here's high tips, here's there. Yeah. I'll take a hundred one, there we go. I can eat. There's a couple of questions under Josh, I just didn't know the answers to.
Okay.
But it's pretty straightforward, it's, is it city of Stottsburg, is that the?
It does say body, it would be the city of Stottsburg.
Okay, so DLGF code is seventy-two. So there is a, we'll take care of that. So there is a preliminary resolution, this is what we've, we've done these, uh, several times in the past. Um, I'm pretty sure that would be the tip. That is not the tip, we, Jane and I both tipped it, yes.
It, yeah, it said it wasn't, but then I was looking at that resolution twenty twenty-ten, they made that.
They extended the ER.
Yeah, but the most recent tip map.
It's always put it in, but I, I don't think this would already be in the ER yet.
It's very confusing, and I asked Kerry, the most recent tip map he sent us was in December of two thousand twenty, and he did not think that there had been anything included since then, and it did not show it.
If you're looking at Lake Road, the south of Lake Road is, the north is not.
Really?
And the ER, I, it was extended from Bill Sears to capture that. Worst case, if we extend, we can, we can do that all, a part of the same process. So we get this, we have to have a preliminary resolution. So then that triggers the next step. So we have preliminary resolution, if that's approved by this board, then it gets noticed, we have a public hearing. Typically, it's thirty days, so it'll be our, not the next being filed, but being after that. Public hearing, any comment, and then we could act on it, per to our resolution. So we are at, well, we have to be, the tenth, and we begin this month. So we can have a preliminary resolution for the next meeting, and then look at approving it the second meeting in February. Okay, is it thirty days, though, for a little? Correct, so the second, be, that's why I'm saying the second meeting in, in February. I'd have to look at the, the dates, but that, all that typically gives us the thirty days before we meet. They're not allowed to go ahead and start doing the renovations, I need to do there, or they're just eyeing that risk? If you're, you're doing it on your own, there's, they do.
Yep.
So we will receive, I mean, if you look across the state, that, that you, you're a public director, obviously, uh, you have an estimated start date, so that is what it is, because I just told, we approve it, we, we've seen it, but, uh, if it didn't get approved, I mean, obviously, we're not liable to you, and if it doesn't, nothing has been approved yet, you can't, so, yes. I just have three businesses that want to move in there, and they're moving there very quickly, so which one of your groups to come on? So I don't want to hold up the products. I'm talking about John's. Sit down. The, uh, I see the, uh, the Katie G properties that we did, resolution, you attached on there. Are you seeking the same payment that you have? No, like, yes. And the, and it. Katie G, Katie G was only four hundred fifty thousand dollars, not the eight hundred fifty one, too, so. So that's the amount you're asking for? That would be my total investment in the property. So is there a question? Uh, we're at a six hundred, and if you look on the bottom here, I have an estimated breakdown, how long? Two hundred in the first year, a hundred a year after the last. So I, I guess the other question to this, and you may have already said it, I was reading through your, your information here, is it, is it, um, the intent to be rehabbed for, uh, lease for each other businesses, that's the question, that's. So we are wanting to occupy export mode, but we are going to lease out or warehouse studies, like manufacturing, and possibly a dent venue, and we have, uh, Terry, you've covered here's a laundry mess, and a bad portion of it, so. But Terry does have had, he's on some laundry, put this up around here, so. Nothing resonant? There are two residential properties on there, and there's a trailer and a home that we're going to bring back. But you're not seeking there? We're not gonna look personally, and that day we propose some housing, because the requirement is two hundred percent. Just so, a, as far as the abatement process, so just to break this down, so we're on the same page. Today, that assessment's at a hundred thousand. You, let's say nine hundred thousand, sorry, no, nice and neat, you put nine hundred thousand, and then it assesses out a billion. That difference is what, that nine hundred thousand. If magic, all, because everything worked out just perfect, and it assessed that what you put in it, that's what's abating. Okay, but if you were to put in eight hundred thousand, and the assessment only raised to five hundred thousand, that four hundred thousand, so we can't abate anything more than that. Just wanna make sure we're on the same page. We've had that issue before, where we can only abate what the assessed value raises. So I don't see. So you're gonna say the same, and they're gonna talk about a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit. Exactly, and that's why it's front happy only abating, so. We're on the same page. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
I will prepare preliminary, like, from the seat of this, and have that on, um, next month's agenda. You make a note, deal something we don't, I don't agree with.
Anybody else for a public comment? Public comment? Only once, we're going. Okay, we're gonna close the public comment section. Thank you very much. Next is new business, organization of council, council president, finance committee appointees.
I, uh, provided the list of the appointments that I, I think the council would, I'd like the council to consider approving tonight for twenty twenty-two. Uh, city council president, Rick Mans, Scott County Redevelopment Commission, we need two members there, Bill Holman and Christian Evans. City Finance Committee, Chris Albertson, Scott County Economic Development Commission, Chuck Rose. And I would point out that, first of all, that, that office won't be vacant until the end of this month. Mike Jewell is currently our appointee to that board, and has been for a number of years, and I'd like to thank Mike for doing that. I spoke with him today, and he, he didn't seem to, to, to mind if someone else assumed that role. Well, in fact, he seemed a little hesitant, so, anyway, I would like to thank him. And in the first February, I will assume that, uh, that CEO of the commission, and finally, the Scott County Economic Development Commission, Chris Albertson. So those were the decisions that I would recommend that we approved tonight.
Uh, we, we need a motion then to go ahead and approve these?
I would say so.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve these, let's present it. Does anybody want to balk on this?
Anybody would leave Rick, so I'll make a motion.
Speaking now for the old Jupice record, I'll try. I'll make the motion, we. Okay, Bill, who makes the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian, have a second, all the members say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Very much, very much. Okay, so, next is, we have a reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one, PTO ordinance.
So this is just, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just moving and allowing employees to take hours, by hours, the half-day, like, like the school.
Correct, yes.
Jane, want, do you want to explain that?
Yes, we were, uh, we were told at the time that we approved the handbook, that we needed to start using hours, because that is the way F M L A is calculated. Uh, my office chose to wait until the first of the year to do that, so we could roll it all, uh, for the whole year. And in doing that, then we noticed this one sentence in there, and I think there will be other revisions to the handbook, but just so we could go ahead and just do this one time in two thousand twenty-two. This was what Josh had recommended, and he included exhibit A with this ordinance. And it's just striking where it says that they, they can be taken in no less than half-day increments. And I think most of the employees that I've spoken with, they're kinda happy of that. They can take a couple hours, go to the doctor, not have to take the whole day. So, yes, there was about three places there, it looks like.
So in one hour increments, right?
Yes.
So they, so if a guy needs to be out two hours, he's only out two hours?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'll make that motion.
Little second.
Which is made by Rick Mans, submitted by Chris Albertson, which has got his concerns. Are you not, all the members say aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign, unanimous, thank you very much.
Do we need a motion to suspend the rules, that second, third reading by Tyler?
Yes, Chuck Rose makes the motion. Okay, thank you very much, is there a second?
Second.
Evan seconds. Any questions, comments? Are you not, all the members say aye?
Aye.
I think that was unanimous.
Yes.
Unanimous, okay, very fine, then now we'll, uh, accept an order to suspend the rules, and go forward with the second, third readings, please.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules, and pass on second, third reading.
Christian, who makes the motions, or a second of it?
I'll say.
No, hold them second, sec, questions, comments? Are you not, all the members say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much, so fast. Uh, let's go down to, uh, let's go down to resolution on the Main Street, support the Main Street program, please. Let's go down to D. Uh, this, is Mike Chesser here?
Can I make a comment on it before we all talk about it?
On the Main Street?
Yes. So, I don't know how much Mike told you guys last time, there's three tiers of it, local, state, and federal. So I don't know what they're asking for today, I was in some of the early meetings. One of the things I think that this committee should be aware of is to actually get to Indiana state level, that they have to have a budget of sixty thousand dollars to get to that tier two. I don't know if you guys were told that or not. And before you guys made a decision, I think you guys should push back on them, for them to give you a budget for how they're gonna get to that sixty thousand dollars, and. and how they're going to bring that money in, without, they've had this conversation with you guys yet. So, they're doing well, they're doing great things, but I think they're getting the cart before their horse.
Mike mentioned some, some money coming from the business commission, correct? Can you remember?
Oh, Mike, I knew it was going to be.
Do you remember the amount?
I, I don't, I mean, this resolution, we're just offering support, we're not pledging any money, we're not, it has to pledge any money. John's breakers, multiple stages. I think they've got to work, I don't think they can just go to step three, I think they've got to stop, work through the steps, I believe, before they become, the last step is a nationalized entity.
So regardless if they make that money or not, this resolution doesn't change anything. The resolution is just, if they can get to that point, which.
The resolution just our blessing.
It's just supporting the effort, isn't it?
Yes, I'll make the motion to suspend.
There's a motion that's before the.
I'll say.
Christian Evans makes a motion to forward the past resolution, twenty twenty-two dash R, dash one, a resolution support the main street program. Chuck Rose, second, is that, questions, comments, concerns about this? Very none, all of you say aye?
Second time, you've seen the resolution, I mean, there's nothing in here.
I haven't seen it. Okay, I mean, I'm just re-reading, I don't think there's anything.
My only concern was, I've seen the main street fail once since I've been up here. It fails again, or you guys, if somebody else steps up and says, I can get that sixty thousand dollars, and I'm not this organization, can you sway, I mean, you can choose who you want, I guess in the future?
I think so.
Okay, that's my only concern, you're not, so, it's your one train, that's okay.
There's nothing binding in here on those things, it's just my question.
Yeah, and I, if they would fail, and another group would pick it up, would think we would support anybody that could promote economic development and, and everything that they do.
Yeah, I just, and I know I'm on camera, and I know I'm going to get burned for it later, I just have concerns of how they're going to raise sixty thousand dollars. The visitors board alone raises two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. If they're getting all their money to make sure, that's not fair to the other organizations and other places, so.
As we had a motion, a second, now ready for a vote, all of you, on this resolution? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Negative, against that, so move. You unanimous, so move. So resolution twenty twenty-two dash R dash one passes. The next is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three, pay. Did you read that, Andrew?
That's wording, it's a little misleading wording, that's what it is.
I mean, I just put, that was mine, I saw Monday, so I put it here, there.
I'm gonna see.
This is, I think, Chuck, you were on this one, this is the.
I wasn't going to say it on the day.
I didn't say it on the day either.
Oh, well. I thought we were going to send it out.
Yeah, I think that was, yeah, that was just. The, so do you want to add?
I have, I mean, I make a copy of it, it's.
This is, so what, well, whether you guys want to address it or not, so everyone's, I'll say, look, this is the ordinance at the request of the court treasurer's office and the mayor's office, they charge for it. We have had an ongoing ordinance for two years now, that if someone is quarantined.
She wanted to wait till the next one?
That they.
Jess did. I don't know why, but Jess wanted to wait till the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not on, they.
She requested it be next meeting, so.
Okay.
So generally, it's offering the same amount. If someone's ordered to be quarantined, we've reduced it down, it was ten, which was the previous, I think it's reduced to ten. Started quarantine, then down to ten, and now it's down to five, because that is the C B C recommended quarantine timeframe. So if someone is ordered to quarantine, instead of us risking that they will, instead of not getting their check and running the risk of going ahead and coming to work and exposing everyone, that day, we would pay them up to five days if they are COVID positive, produce that result, so. This will be on next week's, next meetings.
And in the interim. The other order, the other ordinance expired on the thirty-first of December, so we just, what can we go with in the interim?
So this has language, is the same language in it before, is that it approves any previous authorization given by the mayor. So, and we're in a public meeting right now, I mean, if anyone had concern with doing this, I mean, we're gonna be, we can discuss it. But I, I think that the general operation that my impression suggests is that that's been the city's intent, is if someone's tested positive right now, that we're allowing them to quarantine as required.
As long as it has the retroactive language.
Yeah.
I think we just don't have anything to worry about.
We can probably address it next meeting if it needs to be addressed, but, you know, I should know more about this, but. Is it five days, is that asymptomatic? Not that it's symptomatic, it's still ten, isn't it?
If you're symptomatic, and I, I think if, if you're unvaccinated, it's ten. And I think if you're vaccinated or asymptomatic, it's five. And then you have to wear a mask for five days.
Yep.
And that's a.
So would we want to put it in the ordinance for five days if it's, if someone has symptoms, but it changes, maybe it can change.
But they have to test positive to be paid, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
So they're positive and, and symptomatic, you say that?
No, 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 this is the same language that we, that we've used before. But I think Rick had only the most important distinction. I, I think that if it's vaccinated, positive, or asymptomatic, it's five days. It's when it's unvaccinated, it becomes ten.
And so could we say up to ten days?
That's completely up to you.
Yes, that's why I, I would, I would rather that be the case, I mean.
Flex, to give us flexibility.
Because I don't want someone to be.
Only getting five days paid until like they have to come back to work, even if they are still symptomatic.
Correct, but then I also don't want to open that umbrella, or open that, you know.
Yeah. Because I just think as long as it says up to five, ten days, because if somebody comes back in seven, five, or whatever, you know, whenever they're out of quarantine.
And I, I think at this point, we've all probably been tested and got those little doctor, they, they usually put on there, if you are even symptomatic or you've been exposed, typically, a doctor will put on that day, or include something. So at least H R, court treasurer's office would have something. The language would be clear here, is someone that has tested positive or has been exposed to emergency testing positive, and is now being ordered by a medical professional to quarantine. So you will have caretaker situations or things of that nature. I mean, if you have a doctor ordering quarantine, this would still allow them, as this is what we've done for the last two years, would allow them to have the, basically, the five pay days, or ten, if we.
Up to. So up to ten is the.
I'm hearing that, I'm going ahead.
Can we, yeah, can we take a look at that?
You want me to send that to the council, Josh, is that okay, to send that to them?
I want to amend it right now, but I'll, I'll, I'll put the other ten.
I thought that would change too, if you were exposed, I thought the exposure, is that still a thing?
I, I think if you're unvaccinated, it is.
Right.
Okay.
But the language is that it requires a medical professional to make that call for it, so, I mean, that's.
I guess the other concern on top of the head is availability of tests too. I mean, I know that's an issue. So if somebody is waiting two days to get a test and can't come to work in that meantime, then.
But if they would get a test sometime during that time, maybe they would backdate it to when they started the symptoms.
Correct, I'm saying a test at the end of the quarantine. If they're, you know, not having those symptoms, but they want to test before they come back to work, there could be a lag in getting a test, you know, for two or three days or something.
Always the answer to all those questions.
Does it even matter, because you can test positive for.
For three months. Whatever, that's where they don't learn.
So return to work test is pointless.
Yeah. The language in there is at the, the, the mayor may approve emergency stay home pay. So if the mayor, if I'm at the water department, and I'm sent home, and the mayor, I've got a hundred degree, whatever, this is, whatever, he could authorize the, the stay home pay pending a test. I mean, there, there is that ability to do it. But as you're mentioning, I mean, you've seen stories, I'm sure you guys have seen, it, it's up to, you know, seven, nine, eleven days in some place in the state, right, to get tested, so.
But if the doctor puts the date on it, you know, it kind of covers this, doesn't it? If the doctor says you quarantine five days, this is when you can return to work.
And then the other thing that's in here, is the same language that's been here again, is may not exceed, I, I amended, may not exceed ten business days without approval of the majority of the council. So if we have, you know, an abnormal situation, a hospitalization, or whatever played out, it's possible that we, there could be an exceptional minute.
Well, if somebody has long COVID.
Yeah, exactly, so there, there is the ability to mold the ordinance around a unique situation.
All right, yeah. I guess what we do is take a look, and maybe add more brush stroke in. So do you, do you need a motion to table it for?
No, it is not.
Would you say?
I'm sorry, I gave, I had penciled that in on mine.
No, my, my, I did totally add it too, so.
I think it might be good.
I thought we would get it.
I, I think it might be good if we, if we looked at all, if we had any concerns, you know, kind of pass those out before the next meeting, so possibly we could prove it on all three readings, and, you know, the statute of conduct, so.
Absolutely, awesome. I'll go back to first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two, mass, Mid America Science Park additional event packages. So as we're going in with different events, I guess this is an ordinance just to allow the city to go forward and sell a beverage package, a nut package, or snack batteries, dill nuts, and breakfast. Justice, will you grant this rest of the question?
That has been the best practice of the city on breaks and charges, so keep that practice.
I'll make a move, I'll make a motion that we accept, or approve this ordinance, so that we can get this going.
Thank you. The motion, Rick Mans, to go forward to the past twenty twenty-two dash R dash one. I'm sorry, dash two, sorry about that. And is there a second?
I'll say.
Chuck Rose, seconds. Any questions, comments?
I see you're sitting here, you're, you're good with this?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? Very none, all of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to get unanimous, okay?
But a late motion to suspend the rule.
Chuck makes a motion to suspend the rules.
It's an ordinance, isn't it?
It's a, yes. It needs to, it needs to be a three reading.
Okay, so I'll just make the motion, please, suspend the rules, and then second, third reading, but I don't.
Chuck Rose makes a motion. Is there a second to go forward to suspend the rules?
I'll say.
Christian has seconds, questions, comments, concerns? Very none, all of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, sounds like, okay. Now we need to go forward and, and pass the second one. So we have a motion to pass this ordinance, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two on second, third reading.
I'll make that motion.
Very none, makes a motion, is there a second, please?
I'll say.
Chuck Rose, seconds, questions, comments? Very none, all of you say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. That's all finished. What announcements do we have?
Fair, I'd like to ask everyone to look at their calendars. I know we expressed a need to have an executive session after the first year. As what is after the first year, I know there's a couple issues that we need to discuss. And I'd like to choose this time when all of us can be there, Christian is out, all next week, if I remember correctly.
Sure.
So we can either do it later this week, or following week with whatever work, whatever it is. I'm retired.
We'll look at the week of, uh, maybe the twenty-fourth sometime, like that?
If that works for everyone.
You want that, Christian?
Yes. We have a council meeting on the twenty-fourth.
I'm open every day that week, except the Thursday.
Anybody else?
When you say day, you're talking about during the day, or the evening, just because I know we're, I'm, I'm free, I like making work. Do we have much on the council agenda that night? On the twenty-fourth? I mean, I, I know things can come up, do we, do we know?
So far, you have just think in the, uh, thing you just discussed.
I mean, you know, that sound like a real lengthy, yeah, that sound like a real long council meeting, what about a half? I'm just throwing that out.
We could just meet there.
Pardon me?
We could just meet there.
Where, let's do that.
That causes problems, I don't know, we got to move everything, so. But, yeah, I don't, I cannot think of anything that's going to, come in my book, that would be.
That's twenty-four, that is the council meeting.
Okay.
Stick around, okay, will you guys, for, for the, for the name?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Chuck, did you say an executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll get with you on, on those.
Get that all issued?
Post it for eight, travel time, six, seven, three.
What, what, what we're meeting, or that's going to be not a meeting, an executive session here?
If you want us to do it here, then.
Do we need to go? I, I don't care.
Why would we, we talked about having in America?
We, we can, if there's a reason, I do that, and I, the reason is escape from the right.
It's a lot.
Uh, one of the things. Well, we can do whatever we want, but I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to yield to the incoming president on that, presumably.
So I guess my feeling is, is do we need to, after a council meeting, do, why take the time to drive out there?
We had discussed having, doing like a cyber review out there.
Oh.
I think, it sounds to me, I defer to you, I think, I think like two meetings. The, the meeting that we're referring to might be here, and the cyber meeting, we might be.
I, I do.
Okay, I understand, I was in a serious meeting, so I'm not aware of the, wasn't aware that we were talking about that, but I'm all for that.
Yeah.
So let's, yes, that's fine, so, whatever you guys, Josh, whatever you think, if that, that's what we need to do.
So if you, I mean, I, I know, like, later, we have another situation like tonight, and then it's eight-thirty before we start an executive, so, yeah, you can. We'll plan as best we can, but yeah, let's just post it from here, and then we could, you know, let's do, get a different thing for, this is our.
If, if we have to, can, do we have to, if we have time that night, can we not just do the cyber review anyway?
We could.
Yeah.
Yes, we could.
I mean, just.
Can you see what we're playing, I am.
Right?
Absolutely, we could, we could adjourn it and recess it, we have options.
Okay.
If those like.
I have one option.
Good deal, good deal. As far as announcements, I think Bill's got the big announcement for tonight. Congratulations, Bill, you want to make an announcement about that?
No.
Okay. Well, the word says rejoice with those who rejoice, so we rejoice with you, my brother, tenth day of retirement. Tenth day.
I, I do have one thing.
Okay.
Uh, I have to circulate in front of you, we do not need to do this in the form of a resolution or ordinance. We discussed Novemberish, late December's already in there, a request, a proposal on a comprehensive plan, zoning code revision. This is the three-page document that I put on front of you. Carmen has put together the neat details as far as the business documents, so if there's any typos or errors she did, but we're going to circulate this to some vendors that we know that do this type of work, and then I'll get this to the, to her to, I'll take care of that on, 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 up there. So we'll have a, 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 of the general information here. And we've got a due date of January twenty-eighth at noon, so our first meeting in February. Carmen will be the one that is getting these R F Ps. I've asked that she pencil in that fee to let us know what we received, and be prepared hopefully to make the recommendation, and then whatever this one does, and then go air it in for the final report. Because I know this has been a ball we wanted to get rolling, so we can at least see what possible, looking at where we're at. So we can go to the minutes, Jan, that the R F P, I have permission to pull with the R F P.
Okay, and then we do it noon on the twenty-eighth.
Noon on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Anything else? We'll, we'll look to our previous president, anything else? Chuck?
I think I should, I think I should do it here.
Well, honestly, we had a good president, president.
Yeah, we are going.
We want to, we want to, we never get this far, we feel both congratulations. The Lord bless you all.